Okay, let's see. This is the council with the...
Two items, two, an agency and a council.
Okay.
Can you handle both of those to...
I certainly can.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council and the Garden Grove Agency for Development, Community Development, to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rosen?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. Okay, we have closed session item, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, Qualified Patients Association v. City of Anaheim.
And then the agency item.
And the agency is the...
Mind of a piece of property.
Okay, yeah, I don't have a...
The procurement of property.
Pursuant to government code section 549, 56.8, and it has to do with the property known as the Central Hub on Harbor Boulevard.
Okay, I'll open oral communications. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on...
Negotiation.
Speak on either of those items. I hearing no one, I'll recess the council and the agency to close session. as an amicus curae in the case of Qualified Patients Association v. City of Anaheim. The city will appear in support of the City of Anaheim, which is defending its ordinance banning medical marijuana dispensaries. The vote was five to zero. Okay, I see we have presentations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like Assistant City Manager Les Jones to make these presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. In tonight's community spotlights, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to commemorate two milestone occasions. We begin by honoring John Seymour, who recently retired as the longtime editor of the Orange County News. John, can you come forward? A California native, John was born and grew up in Long Beach. His journalistic career began at the age of sixteen when he landed a job as a sports writer for his hometown newspaper, the Long Beach Press-Telegram. He attended Long Beach State, where he majored in both journalism and social science, and began writing for area newspapers. His news correspondence history stretches across the Southland, the cities including Long Beach, Norwalk, Compton, Rialto, Adelanto, and Colton. For the last twelve years, he has written for the Herald American Newspaper Group of Los Angeles and Orange Counties, serving primarily the communities of Garden Grove, Stanton, Westminster, Fountain Valley, Anaheim, and Buena Park as news reporter and editor for the Orange County News, Anaheim and Buena Park Independence, and Westminster Journal. Throughout his fifty-two-year career, John has steadily held a reputation for being a respected, trusted, and esteemed journalist. He is well-known for his professionalism, fairness, and integrity in news reporting along with his personal candor, humor, and insightfulness. His talents as a writer have repeatedly been recognized and awarded in almost every communications category, ranging from news writing to photography as well as outstanding contributions to journalism. In addition to his professional excellence, John has been honored for his selfless dedication to the communities he serves by countless agencies, including the Lions Club, Kiwanis Club of Greater Garden Grove, the Interfaith Council of Garden Grove, Stanton and Westminster, and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, as well as the City of Garden Grove. John also seizes every opportunity to show caring compassion by ministering to inmates in Orange County jails. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present John Seymour with a resolution of commendation to honor his longstanding and award-winning journalistic career and community service. Garden Grove extends deepest appreciation for his earnest commitment to the city and community and wishes him all the best of his well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
I'd like to present this to you. I hear from you, right, John?
If you say so.
Just go tie that. Take a couple, one, two, and one.
Would you rather pose a little about Miss Garden Grove?
I'd like to.
I'd like to. Yeah, smile, John.
Thank you.
Cheese or something? Okay. Can I get this one?
Would you rather pose a little about Miss Garden Grove?
That would be a smile.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the council and the city staff for all of the many years of support. It's been an honor to serve in this city because this is a great city, not just a good city, but a great city. And it has always been an honor to be involved with the organizations of the community. And certainly that includes the Kiwanis Club here in town, as well as the Lions Club in other cities around here. But certainly, it's been an honor to see people like Matt Fratell rise from the ranks to become the boss. And I know he's done a great job, and the members of the council have been more than just people that I've written about, but I have considered all of the members of the council to be friends. And that is genuine to say that because it is an honor to know these people. To be honored by them is especially an honor. And it is a delight to be honored in the same night as people are here from the Miss Garden Grove. That's very special because that is such an outstanding organization and means so much to the community. And I really appreciate everything that is done by the members of the organization. Again, thank you for the honor, and it is indeed an honor to be recognized by this extremely wonderful organization, Garden Grove City Council and Mayor, and the city staff. Thank you very much.
another milestone in the city by acknowledging the fiftieth anniversary of the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant. Would Stacy and Jerry Margolin please come forward? The Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant originated in nineteen fifty-eight as the Miss Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Pageant when the first queen, Beverly Hansen, was crowned. She and her court rode in the Strawberry Festival Parade and presided over the festival cake-cutting. Subsequently, the pageant was renamed and twenty years later became part of the Miss America Pageant. It was in nineteen eighty-two when the pageant was coordinated by Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. Then Connie and Jerry Margolin began serving as volunteers on the pageant committee. A year later, the Margolins began producing and directing the program. Within a few years, they officially took ownership of the program and recruited a new choreographer, their daughter Stacy. Under their tutelage, the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant has redefined beauty pageants by incorporating additional elements recognizing young contemporary women, including academics, civic service, and talent. Five years ago, the outstanding teen component was added, acknowledging young ladies thirteen to seventeen years old. In addition to grants, the city, community groups, service clubs, and local businesses provide annual support and sponsorships. Over the past twenty-six years, more than one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in scholarships have been distributed to contestants in pursuit of higher education. Miss Garden Grove and her court represent the City of Garden Grove with poise and grace at various community events, including Garden Grove Pride, Mayor's Per breakfast, Strawberry Festival, and red ribbon ceremonies. For fifty years, the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant has provided a springboard for over nine hundred young women to reach their personal and professional goals. Pageant alumni include professional businesswomen, successful songwriters, award-winning theater actresses, entrepreneurs, singers, and educators. At this time, the Garden Grove City Council and Mayor would like to honor and present Stacy and Jerry Margolin with a resolution honoring the fiftieth anniversary of the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant. Garden Grove thanks them for their longstanding commitment to the empowerment of young women. Congratulations.
You have to wait for the shaking of hands.
Hey, Suss.
Jerry, I'm...
You know what? We're missing the council. Can we have the council maybe come out here, too?
No.
This is for the paper. I'll print you however you want. Okay, Jerry, just stand between... Mark, if you'll come this way, just a tad. Okay, and leave a place for... Jerry, there you go. And then Bill, if you'll go that way. And then Stacy, if you'll come this way. Not that much. Now I can see everybody. Okay. Here we go, one, two. They're gonna have two more people before the real... Well, not the real...
I can take another two hundred and thirty-seven.
Okay, we've only rented the hall for another five minutes, so...
Just don't block the people behind you. We don't need to do that. Just move over a bit so we can...
There we go.
Now everybody... Lucy, please come this way. You do that when you walk through. There you go. Ready, one, two. Here, ready, one, two, three.
Headshot on.
That was good. Oh, this is great. Thank you, God, you're down to two thirty.
Yeah. Two thirty's great, actually.
You always make your girls look so much better.
Do we speak? Okay. Speak now, forever hold your peace. I just wanted to thank the city, the mayor, and the city council. My family, as Les has said, has run this program for twenty-six years, and we've had a partnership for as long as I've been involved and my parents have been involved. We couldn't do the program and we couldn't be credible to the community if we didn't have the support of the city. And I really appreciate the support and the fact that they recognize our program as the official... Our girls are the official hostesses for the city, and they always get to know the mayor real well. They take a lot of pictures, and they're at almost, well, not as many events as the mayor is, but they're at quite a few of the events and they get to partner with him in a lot of the things that the city does. And we're just really thankful to be a part of this city. I'm a longtime resident and I'm an employee of the city, so this program is very close to my heart. We do have some of our committee members... Our committee members are sitting in the front row, and of course, we have our current Miss Garden Grove, Nicole Ling, and our current outstanding teen, Gabby Marco, so if they could stand really quick. A lot of these people may look familiar because they don't just volunteer for the Miss Garden Grove Pageant, they volunteer in several organizations throughout the city. Yeah, I know. One at a time. Nothing ever changes. And also...
Guess who she is?
And also, in the second row, we have some of our current contestants that are competing, and some of our court members. Bree and Valerie are on our teen court, and Amber's also on our miss court, and then we have some of our girls that you might be seeing, one of them with the crown on their head after August twenty-second. So we hope to invite you. We hope you'll be at our show on the twenty-second at the Embassy Suites. And we just thank you for the support you've given us throughout the years, and we hope... Well, I don't know if I'll be here for another fifty years, but let's go for ten. We'll come back on our sixtieth. So thank you very much.
Okay, I'll now open oral communication for the council, the agency, and the sanitary district. Rod Powell.
Mayor, council, Garden Grove residents, my name's Rod Powell, and I'm not good at reading these things, but I figured I've tried it twice without, and I miss saying a lot of what I want to say, so... I'm one of six... I didn't write this. I'm one of six complainers that repeatedly comes down here expressing my feelings regarding the fireworks issue, mostly the fact that it's not being put on the ballot. Now I can read. The banning of so-called safe and sane fireworks, the opportunity for us residents to vote for or against this issue is just about passed. For those that are, I guess, gloating over the fact that things are the way they are, things could change. If we had a different council, which I guess we will come November, the council can actually vote fireworks to be safe and so-called safe and sane fireworks to be banned. It doesn't have to be put to a vote of the citizens. If that were to occur, then I can imagine that the people that are for these fireworks, these so-called safe and sane fireworks, they'll be down here in a flash demanding that there be a vote. So to say that there's not the necessity... To say that this item, because there's only six of... I don't even think there's six of us. There's only a couple, three, that come down regularly. That doesn't mean there's only two or three or six people that are interested in this issue. Because a house didn't happen to burn down in the City of Garden Grove this year, thank God, if it's not the, you know, political, you know, sensationalistic thing that it was last year. But there are houses that burned down this year in other cities, so you know. I wouldn't want it on my conscience if someone died because of these fireworks and I didn't even give the citizens an opportunity to vote against them. I didn't write that down. Obviously, I can't follow this too well, but I'm going to go to the second page because I really want to address the issue of Mr. Rosen, your comments last week, that I found them insulting to me. That's not written down either. He said we don't put... You don't put every controversy on the ballot. This has been going on for years. Stonewalling is the term. It doesn't look good when the fireworks companies are paying monies that goes to your campaigns, and then you do exactly what they would want. It doesn't look good. To say that there's only... I already addressed the issue about the six people, so I don't need to reiterate that. He made a pretty, I guess, good statement. I'm sure you thought it, "Well, I'm proud that we have a city that allows that kind of individual celebration, and I certainly don't want to see that done away with." I'm sorry nobody clapped when you said that. I know you were hoping they would. The truth is, well, I better follow the script because the next part, what happened thereafter, was really the part that irks me. You pretty much finished what you had to say, and then it was Mr. Broadwater's turn to talk, and his mic wasn't coming up too well, and he made a comment about that. And then your response to that was, "We should have a vote on that." Or, "No, we should put that on the ballot." And then I think it was you that said that we should have a vote on that. I have it written here, whichever way it was. But personally, I didn't appreciate that. It seemed to demean everything that those of us that have been trying to advocate just to get this put on the ballot, it seemed to put us down, and I don't think that was I was... I talked to Mr. Broadwater before the meeting. I thought we could actually still have a vote. I didn't realize it had to be an agenda item. I guess I'm done, so I was hoping we could actually, at least you could, for the record, say that you're not going to put it, you know, because you always stonewall it. You never, ever actually put it to a vote of you guys, yes or no, were put on the ballot. So I was hoping that if it needs to become an agenda item, I'm requesting that.
Thank you. Donna Erdenevia, I'm sorry if I mispronounce a name.
I've never done this before, so I might be a little bit...
Would you pull a microphone a little closer? Yeah, we can hear you better.
My name's Donna Erdenevia. I live in Garden Grove on Susan Lane, and I'm here about a piece of land, Brookers Stanford, Brookers Way, and I'm representing the people who come into that track. A few years ago, there was a gas station, some years ago, and a donut shop, and then they tore that down, then it was just a piece of land. And then they put a fence around it, and then the weeds have grown like trees. The fence is falling down, and whenever they plaster signs all over it, and it just really looks bad coming into our track. And we're just really embarrassed about it. It's, you know, for even friends to come over, I mean, it's awful, and I'm here to see what can be done about that. I have talked to Rita Kramer. She said that she sent the owner a letter and was going to get back to me the next week, and that was about maybe six weeks ago, and then she never has, and now she doesn't return my calls, so I thought I'd come here and try. And that's simply all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
You know the piece of land?
I understand.
The last time I saw the owner, he said there was going to be a Starbucks going in there. Now Starbucks has cut back since...
Six hundred stores.
Now they're not going to put a Starbucks, so what we want is to take that fence down and put some grass or something, but that fence has got to go. It's just awful.
This is the small Brookers Triangle.
What's the fellow's name that owns that?
Rickheimer.
Why don't we get ahold of Rickheimer and see if we can do something about that?
As far as I know, he's still painting a whole new structure.
Well, you know...
What for? They're closing.
Well, aesthetically, he should do something. Even if he took the fence down and cut the weeds...
Just grass, just plain grass, or even the weeds would look better than this fence. And come November, it's going to be plastered with signs again, and then it's really bad.
Okay. Somebody look into it, so...
Would somebody call me and let me know?
You bet.
Because my next step, I thought, is can you do a petition to get something done if nothing else is done?
We just told you we're going to help you.
You said you would.
Now you're going to do a petition on us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. David Vell.
Mayor with city council, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm the president of the Garden Grove Chapter of ARP, and we meet the third Tuesday of every month right here in this building, and I'm speaking again on the very same things that I spoke before, however, I'm here to make a statement because many of our members, believe it or not, they do watch the program and they check on me to find out if I'm doing my job. So, so far, I guess I have been. So I try to write everything down each time to make sure that I get everything in that they want me to get in. The Garden Grove Chapter of ARP is a senior group of American volunteers dedicated to helping our seniors aged with a little dignity, and we provide a public service, and we believe that public service is about helping people, especially the young, the disabled, the weak, and the elderly. We hope to achieve this goal by keeping our members informed on issues that are important and that affect them and our community at all levels of government, which includes city, county, state, and national. Because this is an election year, our chapter will be doing its part by holding candidate forums and discussing issues that are of concern. It is important to understand that our chapter is nonpartisan. We do not endorse candidates, and I want to make that clear, we do not endorse candidates. However, we do endorse issues that are important, especially to our seniors. With that said, I wish to offer an open invitation to all candidates, this is all candidates that are running for or seeking an office, to come to any of our meetings. Our board of directors meets the first Friday of every month right here in this building in the Heritage Room at nine thirty, and our general membership meetings are held the third Tuesday of every month here in room B at twelve thirty in the afternoon. In past years, our members, just to name a few, have been pleasured by representatives of all parties, Congressman Loretta Sanchez, Ed Royce Jr., Senator Joe Dunn, and Lou Correa, Assemblyman Van Fran, Jose Solario, and city council members, Harry Kreb, Janet Wynn, Deanna Wynn, and Bruce Broadwater have all come to at least one of our meetings, or maybe more. But again, this is an open invitation to all of those that are running for any office if they would like to get our opinion and hear our views on some of these issues. We would appreciate them coming because this is a good chance for us to meet you, and it's a good chance for them not only to meet you, but we get to talk with each other and have a little bit of dialogue. Regarding the fireworks, again, I will say from my own view, from what I saw, it was an improvement, but you know what? I got a lot of telephone calls from people that said the police did not answer the calls that they were making, but I tried to explain to them in all sincerity that I believe our police department does a good job. It's just that they cannot... There is no way that they can possibly answer all of these calls. It's just not possible. I mean, the city is too big, and there are just too many calls. But again, our senior citizens that called me were unhappy with the situation, and the war zones are still there. However, I... This is from what I saw. I didn't see what I have seen in the past, and I tried to make this clear to them, but they said, "You weren't in my... You weren't in my spot. You didn't see what I saw." So again, I have to go by what I'm told, and so naturally, when they tell me this, I have to bring it to your attention, and since I represent them, this is what I do. I want to thank you for giving me this chance and this opportunity to express myself honestly. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, mayor and council, City of Garden Grove. I'm here to... Oh, I'll let you finish. All right. I'd like to mention the farmer's market of Garden Grove. I volunteer there on Sundays to perform music. I DJ there for the people, and get a lot of feedback from them, first level responses. In the past few weeks, it's been dwindling down and down. We're getting less and less people coming down there. I'm wondering what the city is doing to promote people coming to the farmer's market if they have any interest in it, and pretty much what your views are on that. I'd like to see more people come and check it out. We don't have a whole lot of things. We don't have a whole lot of things in the city that bring people to the city. We've got the Costco there, and we get a little trickle over into the farmer's market, but not, it doesn't seem like many people know about it. There's been no advertising, whereas in Fullerton and Anaheim and other cities, it seems they really promote their farmer's markets. I've read about them in the Register regularly, but I've never seen anything, not even in the Garden Grove, we, our monthly emails we get. I've never seen it mentioned one time. So I'm just wondering what you all, how you all feel about that.
Thank you.
I will not eat them on a train. I will not eat them on a plane. I will not eat them on the moon. I will not eat them in this room. I do not like Gren eggs and ham. Sam, I am. Now if that reminds you of the wonderful books written by Dr. Seuss, I'm glad. The Main Street Business Owners Association, in cooperation with the Gem Theater, is promoting a special event coming up this coming Sunday. And that is going to be a taste of Main Street Garden Grove. It will start at 6 o'clock. The street will be closed down. Several of the restaurants on the street will be participating, serving hors d'oeuvres and drinks. The kids from the Performing Arts Colony will be performing at various venues on the street. At 7:30, everyone who has purchased a ticket and has come to the event will move on up the street to the Gem Theater to see a production of Seussical the Musical. This is a great production by our new owners and operators of the Gem Theater, one more productions. My wife and I went and saw it last Saturday, and we were just amazed at the performance of these individuals. It's something special to be in a small theater like the Gem, because as a volunteer rusher at the Performing Arts Center for several years, I got to see a lot of major productions. But I was always somewhere on the sides or up in the balcony. Even when I was permitted to be assigned to the orchestra, I was still far back from the stage. I enjoyed the performances, but it's just not the same. The Gem Theater is so familiar to people that when you're there watching a production, you feel like you're a part of it. The people that are performing are not only on the stage, they're in the aisles, they're in various parts of the theater, and it's just a tremendous feeling of association. I hope everyone will take the opportunity to come and enjoy this event. Tickets can be purchased at the Chamber of Commerce on Main Street. Tickets are $48 per person, and includes all of the venues that are offering hors d'oeuvres and dessert, and tickets to the show, Seussical the Musical. I also, at this time, would like to commend the city staff for the outstanding job they did last Saturday at the Relay for Life to find a cure for cancer. These individuals put in their own time. They're not paid for the work they do during this event, and they have done a marvelous job, at least for the last two years I'm aware of, in promoting this great charity event and helping in our search for a cure to cancer. So again, I want to commend members of city staff for their help on this event. Thank you very much. I have brochures on the event for all of you, and I hope you'll come and join us.
Mr. Nguyen has a question. Go ahead.
Yes, are hors d'oeuvres all you can eat?
The hors d'oeuvres will be served at the various restaurants. They will start at Zlakets Market, they'll go to the Pizza Place, then they will be going to the Azteca Restaurant. We may even have the Downtown Cafe participating. It will end up at Doug's Downtown Grill with dessert. And then from there, we'll all proceed to the theater. I hope you'll be there.
Thank you, Charles.
Good evening, Council staff and members of the audience. I'm the vice president of Garden Grove Downtown Business Association, and I just want to reiterate on what Charles said on a lighter note. This is the first annual taste of Main Street between Seussical the Musical. It's just one more step in our ongoing efforts for the revitalization of Main Street. The efforts include a lot of work in the city, and we hope that the council and staff will work closely with us in revitalizing our dreams and bringing back this street's pride at being one of the best there is. And I extend an invitation to the City Council to join us on Sunday evening, July 27, 6:00 p.m., on behalf of Main Street, the Gem Theater, and the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association. And I want to thank you guys, and if you have a couple hours to spare on Sunday evening, come and join us.
Thank you. Robin Marcario.
Hi, I'm Robin Marcario. It's nice to see you, council and staff and Garden Grove residents. I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank the majority of our council. I serve as chair for the Central Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, and we sponsored our annual meeting last Saturday. And it's our opportunity to have our elected officials give updates about what's happening at the state and the local level, and then afterwards, we have a lunch, and everyone gets a chance to talk one-on-one with our elected officials. This year, we were fortunate to have State Senator Lou Correa was there, Assemblyman Van Tran was there as well, and the majority of our council, former mayor Bruce Broadwater, current council member, Mayor Dalton, thank you also for coming, and Mayor Pro Tem Mark Rosen was the featured speaker, and he has come to our meetings for five years now and answered questions. We had over 100 people, 100 concerned residents in attendance, and boy, did they give Mark lots of questions. Thank you so very much, and thank you for the five years that you've come to our association. And we know that you're termed out in November, and we're very sad that that's the case. I also wanted to bring up that I'm sure the council's aware that there was an article in the newspaper that addressed artificial turf, and I know that the staff will likely be looking into that and giving you a report, because the last time that issue was addressed, according to the Register, was in early 1990s. And so with the drought conditions that we're suffering and the increase in water rates, it certainly will be interesting to get an updated report about whether that's a viable alternative here in our city. And I'd also like to, as kind of a public announcement, the area codes, you will be required to, to dial 1-7-1-4 before any number here in Garden Grove. It'll still be a local call. You won't be charged for it, but you will be required as of August 23 to dial 1-7-1-4 before any number here in Garden Grove. I just wanted to, because that's coming up, and we need to be aware of that. I'd also like to take this opportunity to announce that I am running for City Council in the November election. I'm Robin Marcario, and I'm a lifelong resident here in Garden Grove. I have a major in communications, and I've come to these council meetings for five years now, just to give, you know, to read the reports and give some constructive input. And I work as the chair for the Central Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, which puts out a monthly newsletter and encourages dialogue and input into the process, because the public is part of the decision-making process. It's important to have that there. I also volunteer on many, in many organizations here in our city, and I look forward to the opportunity to be a City Council member. So remember Robin when it comes to voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council. My name is Lynn Ho. I'm a resident here in Garden Grove. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you again for the leadership that you took last week to support the Union of Vietnamese Students Association in renewing their contract for another five-year term. On that note, the Union of Vietnamese High School Students Association is having an event this Friday. I definitely want to extend that invitation for you to make, even the newer members of our community, high school students who really look to you for your leadership in this city. That event will be occurring on Friday, the 25th, from 6 to 8 o'clock in Garden Grove at the Seafood World Restaurant. So I wanted to extend that invitation to you. Another item that I wanted to bring up is, I know that the city is looking at updating its general plan, and as a public law attorney, this is some of the same issues that I look at in my daily life. I think one of the things that gets lost in the mix is that people look at the bigger development projects and forget about the small streets and sidewalks that make up our community. I live on Westlake Street, right in between Acacia and Stanford Avenue, less than a mile away from City Hall. One of the issues that has come up on our street is that there's a lot of traffic in and out from the parking lot from Home Depot to the parking lot of St. Columban Church. Those of you who attend on Sundays will know that that thoroughfare on Westlake Street, a short block, becomes a big parking lot, even though St. Columban Church has embarked on a million-dollar campaign to build their own parking lot there. And so I wanted to pose that issue to the City Council to see, and I know Mayor Dalton brought this up to you just last weekend, as an issue that is pretty disconcerting to a number of the residents on Westlake Street. I understand it's a small street, but I just don't want City Council and members of the Planning Commission to lose sight of that when you're looking at updating your general plan, to know that that's a big thoroughfare for traffic in and out, and that even though there's a traffic sign that says entrance only into the parking lot at St. Columban Church, folks use it as an exit as well, and so that causes a backlog of traffic on Sundays in particular. But when Strawberry Festival comes around, as most of you know, that whole area and that street becomes really congested, and so that's an area that I wanted to bring up in front of the City Council as you're looking at updating your general plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close oral communications, and I'm going to recess the council, because we have Boy Scout Troop 279 here, and there are a lot of young men that want to, or need to earn their badge to fill a requirement, so I don't want to make them sit through the whole night. So if you'll come up, members of the council will sign whatever you need signed, and then you can leave at your leisure after. Or you can stay all night if you like. So why don't you come on forward?
It's always been in local government that people watch you on TV, and they can either come down here and comment, or they can text you. But I received a text message from my daughter, not complaining about the fact that Mr. Powell was being critical of me, but she complained that suddenly the TV went to last week's meeting instead of showing what's currently happening. And so, so they missed all the nice things that Robin said about me, too. But I'd like to get that fixed as soon as we can. Maybe we'll give Mr. Powell another chance to come up and give his speech on live TV. But if we can get that fixed as soon as possible, I would appreciate it, my daughter would appreciate it, and our other viewers would appreciate it.
Yeah, we've been informed that somewhere at Time Warner, they've interrupted the transmission, and we're working desperately to get them to fix it.
Okay.
But yeah, it's out of our hands. It's coming out of Time Warner.
Okay, we're waiting for Bruce and... As soon as Councilmember Broadwater gets back, he'll open the agency, and we'll go to that, so.
Actually, Granicus is it? I think Granicus is... I think, I don't want to make it loud where everybody can hear. It's like there's a delay. Oh, yeah, it's on Granicus. The internet's working. If his daughter wants to turn the internet on.
No, they can't, because they're not here.
We can tell Mark stopped.
We can call your daughter and say it's on the internet, but we don't have any way of sharing that.
Three through six Q be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Move the balance. Have a motion.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, your public hearing tonight is to consider the street lighting district and the park maintenance district assessments for fiscal year 2008, 2009, and Tony Aquino is here to give a brief staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, tonight the City Council is asked to consider holding a public hearing and then adopting the confirming resolutions for a collection of assessments on the city's street lighting and park maintenance districts. On June 10, 2008, three resolutions of intention to levy and collect these assessments were adopted by the City Council. The purpose of the assessments is to pay for the operation and maintenance of the street light and park districts. An engineer's report has been prepared and is on file for the three districts with the Public Works Department detailing the costs and assessments. The public hearing is required by law, and its purpose is to hear testimony on the question of the annual assessments. Once the hearing is complete, the resolutions may be adopted. Should the resolutions pass, the required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for a collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1,300,000 in streetlight revenue and $695,000 in park maintenance revenue. In conclusion, there are no increases in the assessment rates, and there are no new zones in the districts for this year. This concludes staff's report, and staff is available to answer any questions the City Council may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you clarify for the public that the, although we say we will raise the amount of money, there's no, we're not assessing new taxes?
We're not assessing new taxes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move the item.
Second. Have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
That covers everything. One?
Yes.
Okay. Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is in agreement with Correctional Systems Incorporated for our jail booking and security services, and Captain Thrasher is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. The purpose of this staff report is to seek council approval to renew the city's contract with Correctional Systems Incorporated, CSI, and now also known as Cornell, to provide jail booking and security services for the police department through June 2009. In June of 2000, the City Council first approved the contract with CSI to provide 24-hour jail booking and security services for the Garden Grove Police Department. Because of CSI's past record, the police department requests that the contract with CSI be renewed for another year or through June 2009. The reason and benefit for using contract jail services for booking arrest fees... The reason and benefit for using contract jail services for booking arrestees, providing security in the jail, and transporting arrestees to jail has been to reduce the time it takes officers to process arrestees and return to the field from over two hours, back in my day, to 15 minutes. The time-saving has increased officers' availability to handle calls for service. In the fiscal year ending '07-'08, CSI jail staff processed 6,298 arrestees. The jail contract has enabled the police department to keep the equivalent of seven officers on the street. The proposed cost of the jail contract with CSI is $449,869. The proposed contract cost includes a 3% adjustment from last year's cost to cover increases in salaries and other expenditures. The cost of the proposed contract with CSI services was anticipated and is fully funded in the police department's current budget. No additional funding will be necessary. The police department recommends that the City Council approve the renewal of the jail contract with CSI through June 2009. This includes the staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Captain Thrasher? I'll move the issue. Second. Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
9B.
Mayor, 9B is a ward of contract to construct the rubberized asphalt on Trask Avenue, and Bill Murray is here to give a report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, on June 24th, 2008, the council approved a cooperative agreement with the Orange County Transportation Authority to construct two miles of rubberized asphalt overlay on Trask Avenue from Euclid to Magnolia Street. The purpose of the overlay is to provide additional noise mitigation for residents living to the north of Trask Avenue as part of the SR-22 project. On July 8th, 2008, five bids were received and opened. The lowest qualified bidder was Hardy &amp; Hardy Incorporated, with a total bid amount just over $1.2 million. The bid is within the budget established in a cooperative agreement. Should the council decide to award the contract this evening, the construction could begin once a one-quarter-mile segment of sewer line is placed in Trask Avenue from Gilbert to Magnolia. That work is estimated to be complete in mid-August. The work will be done in half-mile segments or less to better accommodate city traffic. This will extend the total project time, but we expect the work to be completed by September 2008. This concludes staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions.
There's no impact to the general fund. Is there not money for this coming out of our general fund?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, Measure M, and what other money is it?
Actually, we got a grant, $150,000 from Waste Management. It's for using recycled tires.
Thank you. Any questions?
Have Hardy &amp; Harper done work for us before?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm glad to see a new contractor being used, because I know I see R.J. Noble's name all the time on projects and All American Asphalt, and it's just, it's nice to spread the work around every now and then.
Yes, that's mostly due to the rubberized asphalt. It's a bit of a specialty, and so they were more competitive in that respect.
Okay, good. Yes, Ms. Lynn.
Yes, I have a question. How long would this project take, and do you contemplate the street closures?
About a month and a half, and there will be basically minor closures to accommodate the paving operation. Now, paving rubberized asphalt will be more of an inconvenience than paving regular asphalt because the increased time required to basically lay the rubberized asphalt, you cannot immediately put traffic on it. It has to gradually reduce in temperature until you can place traffic right on it. So this will be a little bit more of an impact than regular paving projects that you've seen around town.
And this project will start when?
It should start in mid-August. We do have a sewer line, a small one that's being placed, and we want that construction to be completed, and we're going to go right on the heels of that.
Thank you.
Which is great, so we don't dig up for a sewer line, close everything up, and then dig up again.
Correct, sir.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Any other questions? Move the issue.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
9C.
Mr. Mayor, 9C is the establishment of a City Council Audit Committee, and our Finance Director, Kingsley O'Carrikey, is here to explain that request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. With this item, staff is asking that you review and consider the establishment of the City of Garden Grove City Council Audit Committee, consistent with the recommendations of Governmental Accounting Standards Board as outlined in Statement of Auditing Standards Number 114, and that's entitled "The Auditor's Communication with Those Charged with Governance." Statement Number 114 applies to all industries, including governmental entities, and is effective for the City of Garden Grove in the fiscal year ended June 30, 2008. This new standard was issued and designed to foster proper communication between auditors and governing officials. It is intended both to expand communications and to stress the importance of effective two-way communications between those charged with governance and the external auditors. Management cannot be the conduit for this essential communication. And the standard defines those charged with governance to mean those persons with the responsibility for overseeing the strategic direction of the entity and obligations related to the accountability of the entity. For the City of Garden Grove, the City Council serves that role. There are several ways the city can meet this requirement. One is the City Council in its entirety to meet at any time the auditors want. There could be many meetings in a year, and there could be a problem to set up. Another way is for the City Council to hire a second public accountant or auditor, who will act as the conduit between the financial auditors and the City Council. This option is also expensive. A third option, and perhaps the most workable option, is to establish an audit committee of the City Council. The committee will meet with the auditors as necessary, and then report or take essential matters to the whole council. And it should be noted that an audit committee of the City Council is typically made up of two City Council members, preferably the mayor of the city and one other council member. The auditors anticipate a minimum of three to four meetings a year with the audit committee. The first meeting will be part of the audit planning process in the spring to discuss the scope of the audit and any concerns the City Council may have, or any areas the City Council may want to stress in the audit. The second meeting will occur sometime in late September, after the completion of the field work, the audit field work, and that will be to report and discuss any observations and findings the auditors have at that point. Then a final meeting will take place sometime in December, where the auditors will present the financial statements and their reports. Staff is suggesting a combination strategy here. One is that you form the audit committee that will meet with the auditors as much as necessary during the fiscal year to plan and execute the financial audit. The members of the committee will report any significant issues to the City Council as necessary. In addition, once a year, staff is also proposing that the auditors will meet with the entire council, to receive, the entire council will be there to receive the financial reports and have the auditor address the entire council at that point. There are no financial impact in this proposal, and in terms of how you meet our community vision, the implementation of this new standard and the creation of the audit committee is consistent with the vision of the Garden Grove as a well-administered city with an informed community. Staff recommends that the City Council approve tonight the establishment of the Audit Committee of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, consisting of two members of the City Council, preferably, again, the mayor and one other City Council member. We also have Mr. Mike Morland in the audience. Mr. Mike Morland is the Principal of Morland &amp; Associates, our external auditors. Recently, they marched with MGO, Macias Guinea and O'Connell Accounting Firm, and he is now a director with the new entity. And we can address any questions you may have. This concludes my presentation.
Any questions? You want the mayor and somebody else, right?
Yes, sir.
There ought to be somebody that's going to be around. Who's on the foundation?
Well, I am, and Steve is.
I'm confused where we're at, because I thought we did this before a few months ago. The mayor and I have already met with Mr.?
Morland?
Yeah, Mr. Morland, yeah. Did we not have this item before, my déjà vu, or why did?
No, you didn't have it as a formal formation of the committee. It was introducing the new requirement or the new suggestion to have a committee, and so it was sort of laying the groundwork for this formal formation of the committee.
I'll make a motion as mayor and Steve.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, Matters, 11A. Mr. Broadwater. I requested a discussion of medical marijuana dispensaries, and the reason I did that is because they're becoming very, very popular in California, and a lot of cities are putting up some type of a bulk work against them, and I think the Garden Grove ought to look into that. Earlier today, somebody asked me about it, and I told them that I thought the dispensaries were a comparison to opium dens. I mean, it's a place to go and smoke marijuana, and you do it legally in the state of California, but it's still against the federal law. I'm not sure how all that works, but I think that we ought to, the main problem with them is they're just like adult bookstores. They're a place where problems are going to happen, and problems occur. Police, more police are needed in those areas and that type of thing. And I think that's just something that we ought to avoid if we possibly can. Several cities, Costa Mesa, Anaheim, have laws against them. In fact, Anaheim's is being tested in the courts. It survives Superior Court, but now it's being appealed. And I just think that we ought to direct Mr. Nixon to come up with a plan for us to do something about not having them in the City of Garden Grove, and maybe bring in some ideas from other cities that have used it, and in the next couple of months, or the next month or so, let's get it on the agenda and take a position on it. I think if we don't, somebody's going to open up their doors on us, and the next thing you know, we're going to have a dispensary, or an opium den, or whatever you want to call it. And I just believe that we're asking for large problems if we don't do something about it, nip it in the bud, and... What?
No pun intended.
You know, that went right over my head. I'm getting too old. In fact, I was at lunch this afternoon with four or five guys, and I started asking them who had smoked marijuana, and another fellow and myself of the same age were the only two guys that hadn't, so it just, I guess it's your age, it does that. But I totally am opposed to it, and I just don't think, I think that if, and I certainly have no feelings on it all, but I believe if it's, if it is a medicine, then you ought to be able, the doctor ought to write a prescription, and they'd be able to get their prescription filled at Savon's. I don't believe we need to have special clubs and places for people to sit around and smoke dope. I just, I'm just opposed to it. And so I would like to have the direction, I'd like to make a motion that we ask Mr. Nixon to come back with something in the next couple of meetings and see if we can't put something together.
I second the motion.
Well, I'll speak to it briefly. I'd like to know what the policies of other cities are. Are there medical dispensaries in Orange County in any particular city? I don't want to see us being the only city that has them, because then you attract all kinds of people to the city who wouldn't be here otherwise. It's like, you know, if we were the only city in the county that had a homeless program where we fed the homeless, we'd have all the homeless here. And we get kind of, we kind of get that with fireworks, being one of five cities that allow fireworks, we get all the fireworks users coming into the city, which we've sort of put a damper on with $1,000 fines, but still, the point is, if you're the only city that allows something, you're the city that gets all the users. So as long as...
I'm saying, I'm saying not to allow it.
Well, that's the point.
Okay.
We were to say, yeah, open up medical marijuana dispensaries here, and we're going to be the city where everybody comes to for them.
Well, the price of real estate'd go up.
Anyway, so I don't think we ought to stand out in that regard.
Well, I know that, you know, in the past, in San Francisco and some other areas, it hasn't worked well. The dispensaries turned out to be points of sale to anybody that had money. And, you know, we don't want to run into situations like we have in the past with cyber cafes and hookah bars and everything that slipped in and people didn't know anything about, and then all of a sudden found out there were many more of them than you certainly wanted in your area. And there were a lot of problems created with those type of things, and we certainly want to avoid that with marijuana dispensaries. So I agree. I think that we should have our council look into it and come up with some kind of an ordinance based on prohibition and/or control, preferably prohibition now.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Broadwater. I really don't have anything this evening. I've got a bit of a cold, and so I'm going to cut it short and go home. Ms. Rosen.
Well, I have a few things. First of all, I want to second what Charles Mitchell said about Susical the Musical, which opened last Friday, I think, last Thursday, and I was, I attended it, and it was a delightful show, wonderful show. They've really done a lot with the Gem Theater, and I would recommend people go not just for the taste of Garden Grove, which is this coming Saturday, but Sunday. But the show runs, I believe, I'm going to get it wrong again, August 17th, and it's a wonderful opportunity for people in Garden Grove to see it. And Henry V was playing at the amphitheater that same Saturday night, so we had two shows going at the same time, which is doubling the amount of culture we normally get in Garden Grove, because the Gem's been closed for years and the amphitheater is used in the summers, but, so that was a wonderful night, and a taste of Garden Grove will accentuate that after you, either before or after you go to the show, go down to Main Street and enjoy one of the restaurants there. So that's, that's a great show, and they've got four other shows scheduled already for this theater year, so they're working hard at it, and we really ought to patronize it. The Sheraton on Harbor Boulevard opened, also opened last Thursday for business, and I took a tour of that. It's the 10th hotel that has opened in Garden Grove since I've been on the council, the eighth one on Harbor Boulevard, and it's a beautiful hotel. You walk in, and it's marble, and it's just sparkling, and everybody ought to go down and take a look. You don't, if you live in Garden Grove, you don't necessarily have to spend the night there, but go take a look at it, because it's really a beautiful hotel. I wanted to bring up two pieces, potential pieces of business, I think both of which were alluded to already. One is with regard to landscaping in residential areas. There was an article in the paper, I guess a few weeks ago, about artificial turf, and apparently our ordinances do not allow artificial turf, which I didn't know until I read the articles in the paper. Do we, do we require every single family home to have a lawn, or can a house have a hardscape?
It's generally 50% of the front yard area needs to be landscaped. Doesn't have to be a lawn. It could be plants and trees and shrubs. It doesn't have to be grass, but 50% could be concrete and some type of hardscape. The other 50% is supposed to be some sort of a landscape, but not necessarily a lawn.
Okay. I wonder if we could have a discussion about that, you know, given potential drought problems and just some of the stuff that's been in the news lately. I wonder if we could revisit whether we should allow artificial turf in front yards, or what kind of hardscapes we allow, whether we should expand that. And I know the arguments both ways. The New Yorker Magazine last week had an article about lawns, how lawns are, people use pesticides on lawns, so lawns can be toxic. Now, that may be exaggerated, but that's what they're talking about there is... Now, that may be exaggerated, but that's what they're talking about there is AB 32, the greenhouse gas bill that passed the legislature two years ago, whether this plays into that. On the other hand, if you, to the extent that you're putting cement or hardscape on properties, you're contributing to water runoff problems. So I wonder if we could take a look at that.
What about oxygen?
Well, oxygen, too. The other thing I wanted to bring up is term limits that a couple of people brought up. And two years ago, in the spring of 2006, I made a proposal to the council to abolish our term limits and put that on the November, not the November, the June 2006 ballot, because Councilman Lee's was termed out, and I thought it was unfair that he couldn't run for reelection. And I had two votes for that, and I actually offered to trade a vote to put fireworks on the ballot in exchange for a vote to put term limits on the ballot. But the councilman, who would have liked to have seen that, disliked Councilman Lee so much that he wouldn't even vote to put fireworks on the ballot to let Mark Lee stay another term. So neither one of them made the ballot, and that councilman's no longer on the council. But what I would like to put on the ballot this year, we have a requirement for council members, such as myself, who are termed out, that you have to sit out for four years, but mayors, who get termed out, like Bruce Broadwater, only have to sit out two years, and then they get to run, which he did. And I think that's unfair. So I would like to put on the agenda a ballot measure for this November to reduce the sit-out time from four years to two years. And what I'd like to do is to adjourn this meeting, I'm told this is the way to do it, is to adjourn this meeting to July 29th, next Tuesday, and agendize putting a ballot measure on the ballot for November, which would reduce that period of sit-out from four years to two years. And I guess at the end of the meeting, I'll make the motion to, is it to adjourn this meeting to July 29th?
Yes, and to agendize the requested item.
Okay. So at the end of the meeting, I'll make that motion, and if there's two other council members who'd like to shorten that term, then they ought to vote for that, too.
Is there anything else going to be on that agenda?
Whatever, anything else that the council would request to be placed on that agenda and a majority. I mean, the only thing I've heard so far is that one item.
Wasn't staff looking into artificial turf already? I mean, is that enough time to get back with something?
We can come back. If you have a meeting on the 29th, we could, if you'd like, have a discussion regarding artificial turf.
Okay.
If you want to package all that.
Yeah, if we're here, if staff has enough time, that's fine.
We can have a presentation or information for that.
Okay.
Ms. Lynn.
Yes. We received a complaint that the fireworks, the illegal fireworks on Lake Street in Garden Grove was not contained. So I'm going to pass this on to you, Matt. And so for next year, if we could have our police department kind of patrol that area. I also received a letter from Marlim and Helen Mason regarding the artificial turf, and I'm in agreement with Mayor Protem Rosen to put that on the agenda for the next meeting. And I want to remind everyone, we have concerts, free concerts, every Thursday. And if you need information to that, contact our Community Development Department. It is at the East Gate Park every Thursday from 6:30 to 8:30. And you can go to the park and also have good food on Main Street. Also, our Community Development also have a list of different places that families with children, they can take the children to for a very nominal price. And this list is available to you at our City Hall Community Development Center. And I will give, if they don't have it, I will give it to the Community Development Director. Also, we have another event in the city of Garden Grove. It's on August 3rd, Sunday, August 3rd, and it's from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's a series of concerts from the Vietnamese-American community. It's a group to help Vietnamese veterans in Vietnam who are not, who doesn't have really any group to assist them after their injuries after the Vietnam War. And I encourage everyone to go to this event, because it's very cultural. It has a lot of music and different, the top Vietnamese-American performers will be there, and it's very cheap. It's only $10 per person, and you can spend a whole day in there from 12 to 8:00 PM, and they have very good food also.
Where is that held at?
It's at the, again, it's August 3rd, at the Bolsa Grande High School in Garden Grove on Magnolia and Westminster Boulevard. And also, Matt, could you please have the traffic department look at the St. Columban, the situation that Ms. Ho has brought to attention? Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. You did a great job on mentioning all the items that are coming up, especially some of the events, and we do hope that you will support your city. And Taste of Garden Grove, I know, is going to be great, and this will be the first year, but it certainly won't be the last year. But we need to participate. We need to get out. We need to see what's here, and when we know what's here, patronize what's here. That helps the city. It's healthy for us. It's healthy for the city. It's healthy for the people that live here. Now, we're going to adjourn this meeting till?
Well, I'll make a motion.
All right.
I move to adjourn this regular meeting to July 29th at 6:30 PM and to list on the agenda a proposal to put on the ballot, a reduction of the term limits, the amount of time a councilman has to sit out from four years to two years, and the subject of artificial turf.
Where will this be held, and will it be televised?
Well, I think all our meetings ought to be televised. I would assume it would be held here.
Okay. No, no, that's, I wanted to get that out so people know. Okay.
Second. And then if any other council member wants to add anything to the agenda?
I would like to comment. I'd like to soon not add anything to it, so. I mean, you guys slipped the artificial turf on me, but I'll go with it, but let's keep it short.
Okay, then we're adjourned till that date and time.
Do we need a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.